Good morning, everyone. This, the Wednesday, March 15th, 2023 recessed session of the NAGS Head Board of Commissioners is hereby called to order. The first item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda, and a motion would be in order.
Say moved.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you. The next item on our agenda is public comment. Is John Leidy going to be here this morning?
He's supposed to be, I just texted him.
Okay. Well, we will proceed with public comment at this time. We do have a few rules, which I won't remember the way that John does, but I believe it's limit your comments to not more than five minutes. Address the board in its entirety, no personal attacks, and I think that's it. So anybody who would like to address the board is welcome to proceed to the podium. Please give us your name and your address.
And also, this is not a time for discussion, we won't engage in discussion.
Thank you. You remember the rest of it. Good job.
Good morning again. My name is Basil Belish, my wife and I live at 3521 South Memorial Avenue in NAGS Head. Regarding the UDO amendment changes we'll be talking about later, I've reviewed all the materials that were updated since the March 1st public hearing, and these changes seem appropriate based on the public hearing discussion that day. I've not seen the updated zoning amendment map yet, but my neighbors and I hope you will make the current residential lots on the west side of South Virginia Dare Trail between Hollowell and Conk Streets, and the lots on the east side of South Memorial between Bainbridge and Hollowell Streets into R3 zoning. All these properties are currently zoned C2, but we're opposed to go to R3 with the other changes at the March 1st meeting. These residential properties are These residential properties already meet R three requirements, and this will ensure the look, feel, and nature of the historic character area. I think the planning board, the board of commissioners, we work today on all this, and thanks for letting me speak.
Thank you.
Hi, John.
Good morning.
Who's next?
John Harris, Kitty Hawk Kites. Mayor and commissioners, thank you for all the time you've put into this. I want to thank the planning staff for putting in all the time and work into fixing C five amendments for the historic district and trying to come up with a U D O that will work, which is a huge challenge. The most positive amendment is the amendment that allows existing businesses that have been made non-conforming over time by changes in the ordinances and by C five to rebuild their existing footprint after fire or storm damage. Thank you for that amendment. It's very positive. There are still text amendments that came out on Friday that are harmful to the business and commercial property owners. One of those is lot coverage. The lot coverage in C five is more restrictive than the lot coverage in C two, and therefore would limit the development of a piece of property in C five in comparison to C two, and therefore devalue that property. On a piece of property that I have on Sunside Road and twelve that I wanted to develop, I estimate, and I don't have all the information, of course, but I estimate it would cost me a thousand square feet in footprint, the difference between C two and C five. So this is, this is a harmful text amendment. It needs to remain the same as C two. The other is a seventy-five foot setback from twelve, if you have property of budding twelve and one fifty-eight, this, I believe this would make some of the lots in Nagshead undevelopable, and this should be, this should remain the same as C two also. The setback should be the same as C two. There's no need for a seventy-five foot setback for forty-two hundred square feet of footprint, building footprint. I'm increasingly concerned at the restrictive amendments being directed at commercial. I don't think this is an intentional, but when you view that, you know, what's, what's been directed at commercial and nothing at residential in that district, it makes you question. It takes both communities to make a vibrant Nagshead community, which has been the case for many, many years here in Nagshead. We have a very vibrant community. Takes both communities to thrive. It occurred to me when I was looking at this, you know, if the town, the town would not have to remap anything if they looked at residences in Nagshead. Their short-term rentals, eight, at least eighty percent of them are short-term vacation rentals, which are businesses which are commercial, so they could be, remain, they could remain B in the commercial zone with no negative impact to them. So, thank you all for your time in addressing this.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Philip Foreman from Brewthru. I wasn't really going to speak, but I will, just I appreciate every change you guys have made so far. I'm sure everybody read my letter, including my mother, who is nervous as can be reading it. But I did want to say thank you to everyone, I respect you. For me, I've grown up here, grew up on, on Nagshead Cove, out on the end, and I think it's just important that we're fair to one another. And I just hope that, like John said, any other changes, you just consider it were your business, it was your family that worked that hard to give you the opportunity to carry something on. Just didn't like the way it happened so fast, and we just kind of got caught off guard. But again, thank you for your time.
I'm Michael Roderer, Old Nagshead Cafe, and I'd like to thank everybody too. I'd like to thank the mayor, commissioners, I'd like to thank the planning department, all the amendment changes that were incorporated. I think that helped out a lot. I do still have concerns. I will read from a prepared statement. When I first reached out to planning concerning the zoning issue, I was told that it wouldn't affect the current state of my business or property unless I were to possibly expand on that business. I was also told that my business and property were the epitome of what the town was looking for. The next time I showed concern was after the March first public hearing. I was told by individuals that amended text was being drafted, and this text would offer protection to my property and business, and it wouldn't hurt me as much as the original proposal. The key word is hurt and/or harm. At this time, I'd like to state that I do still have concerns about the harm and anxiety being caused by this proposed zoning change. I would also like to present suggestions on how the harm could be reduced to a level where I believe all parties can come to a mutual understanding. I sent letters to everyone yesterday outlining my concerns, grandfather rights, lot coverage, and maximum habitable square footage. There were two, there's two main points I'd like to touch on at this time, the first being the current C two lot coverage of fifty-five percent that we now have, and the reduction to forty-five percent coverage under the proposed C five zoning. The second pertains to square footage requirements for buildings fronting N C twelve. The current maximum is five thousand square feet of habitable area. C five ultimately penalizes certain properties that share both frontage on N C twelve and Highway one fifty-eight, reducing the overall square footage to a maximum of four thousand two hundred square feet of habitable area if the primary structure is less than seventy-five feet away from N C twelve. The seventy-five foot measurement would also harm properties who have a narrow area in between these two thoroughfares, leaving them with nowhere to go if they were to use the property in a different configuration. In summary, I would simply like to propose that the C five or C two lot coverage of fifty-five percent and the square footage requirements for buildings fronting N suite twelve remain unchanged. These could easily be adopted into the proposed C five zoning district and would pose no threat to the historic character of the area. This would help to alleviate any harm and apprehension for property owners and would help to protect the value of their property and businesses. I hope you will consider these suggestions, and I'm certain that you will make the right judgments. Thank you once again for all your time and consideration in this matter, and I do truly appreciate everybody's input and all the conversations that I've had in the last few weeks.
My name is Ron Payne, I live at four twenty Westbridge Lane, Nagshead. I'm also chairman of the Board of Education for Dare County. We're getting into the season that we want to start recruiting teachers and staff for next year. Exciting time for, for Dare County Schools, new superintendent, new vision, and as the new board chair, I'm excited also as a former educator on what we're going to do with Dare County Schools. But with the recruiting season coming in, our biggest hurdle is we want the best and the brightest teachers and staff to come to Dare County. Why? Because it benefits our students, it benefits the community. But we have a problem. We can offer positions to potential staff members, and the last question we ask them is, can you find a place to live? Question's no. We do have teacher housing, it is full, so that's a big problem for us. We want to recruit the best and the brightest teachers and staff to our schools. I sat in the meeting two weeks ago when there was a full house and listened to the C fives, the C threes, did a lot of homework to understand that. The one thing that was left off the table since last October, September, was essential housing. We were on the cusp last year on essential housing in Nagshead, and all of a sudden it's taken off the table. Last October, many community leaders, business owners, commissioners spoke in front of this group stating the need for essential housing. It's a crisis. Business owners can't find workers because they can't find places to live. Same thing with our, with, with the school system. We want to have the best and the brightest teachers come into our school district. We actually want this school district not only to be the best in the state of North Carolina, maybe the United States, I think we can reach that goal. It's an achievable goal because we can get the staff, the teachers into Dare County, but we do need essential housing. One of the board members stated that politicians seem to kick things down the road a little bit and gets put back, things get put on the back burner. Well, I'm asking for essential housing not to be kicked down the road anymore, to put it back on the front burner. It's essential not only to the schools, but to the business owners. Who doesn't want to live next to, door to a fireman, to a teacher, hospital worker? All these people spoke in front of you before. So once again, to have the best school district that we can possibly have, we need to have essential and workforce housing, and I'd like to see that put back on the table in the town of Nagshead. Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Kyle Stray. I'm an attorney, and I was retained by several of the business owners within your community. I want to read a couple of things to you very quickly. C dash one neighborhood commercial district. The C one neighborhood commercial district is intended to accommodate neighborhood-scale pedestrian-oriented development that serves the needs of the immediate residential neighborhoods with an emphasis on expanding neighborhood commercial activities along Highway twelve. Coming down, it further reads, "It is also the intent of C one district to encourage the development of unique, locally-owned businesses that are designed to be reflective of the community's heritage and lifestyle, both in scale and massing as well as site layout. This could include the use of accessory residential dwelling units to commercial businesses or other arrangements of mixed use that are designed to be pedestrian-oriented and close proximity to one another." In your C one zone, the maximum lot coverage goes up to fifty-five percent. You've already heard that in your C two zone, your maximum lot coverage goes up to fifty-five percent. Now, you can go over that by putting appropriate pavers in that allow drainage, so you get greater than fifty-five percent. If we now turn to the proposed ordinance, C five, section six point two, point four, point six, that's a mouthful. "The C five historic character commercial district is intended to accommodate small, neighborhood-scale, pedestrian-oriented, commercial and residential development patterns with single-family dwellings and neighborhood-serving businesses consistent with the size and scale of cottages within the historic cottage row. Commercial development must be designed to use, in used-scale character intensity to be competitive, compatible with and protect the surrounding residential area, including historic cottage row, natural resources, and scenic watersheds. The district shall encourage development of unique, locally-owned businesses designed to be reflective of the community's heritage and lifestyle, both in scale and massing as well as a site layout." The point I want to make to you is, when you look at the intent of the C five district, it reads very comparable to what you have in your C one district. However, there is a big difference. Your lot coverage in your C five district is a maximum of forty-five percent. Now, yes, you can put in drainage pavers and get up to a maximum of fifty-five percent, but nonetheless, you're starting off with a ten percent differential in what you can build without putting pavers in. And I don't see anything that tells me why the businesses that are between, or that are within this area, let me call it that way, should be subjected to a difference between the fifty-five percent and the forty-five percent. Where is the intent that causes you to treat these businesses differently? Just a general list of some of those businesses that are affected, and I'm going by Attachment C that was attached into your name, Kitty Hawk Kites, Jockey Ridge Crossing, Nagshead Cafe, Mulligan's Restaurant, Nagshead Pizza, Brewthru, Austin Seafood, Station Twenty Lifeguard, Sui's, Crazy Good Cabinets, St. Andrews Church. My point simply being, these businesses are reflective of, what is this town? They reflect that, and yet you're going to penalize them for some reason that your intent doesn't even tell us why. I respectfully request that you amend your ordinance before you pass it to change it to the same thing as C one and C two, which is a fifty-five percent lot coverage, so that you're not penalizing these businesses where the intent as set forth in your language doesn't give any reasoning to penalize those businesses. The bottom line is that what I call fundamental fairness. You have the right as a town, there's no question you have the right as a town to design zones, and those zones can have differences, but I think that you should tell the community why this zone and this business is going to be treated differently from another business. And the change that is being requested of you by the people who have spoken today and myself is very simple. It's not a hard change to make, which is just simply change what's here from forty-five percent to fifty-five percent. The final point I'll make is that most of us had an opportunity to start looking at these changes that your staff made on Friday, and so we've only had a few days to examine this, which also means you, the board, have only had a few days to examine this, and therefore anytime you have an ordinance that you're changing, putting sets of eyes to it and examining it so that everybody understands what it really does and how it does it, is important. And you may wish to consider the concept of sending this back to the planning board. I realize that's not going to happen. I know where you're at. Am I on five minutes?
Yes, sir.
I didn't see a clock. Thank you.
Thank you.
In one quick second, I will say, everybody that I've spoken to has appreciated staffs attending to what was said last meeting. Thank you.
My name is Bobby Harrell. We own Harrell and Associates here in Nagshead, and we operate our business in a C two zone half of the past twenty-two years. I'd like to reiterate a few things that have been said this morning, support, you know, the speakers that have spoken about the forty-five versus the fifty-five percent. As, as most of you know, because I've spoken here several times during these proceedings, that our company does represent Elliot Kathman, the four-point-seven acre tract on Hollowell Street that was, you know, originally planned for essential housing, and, you know, I think a lot of this started because of that. I think he has agreed and, and asked to be, you know, the rezoning process to be rezoned at C five. He was C two, and doing that, you know, he's, he's going to lose value, he's already lost value, and what he can do with his property. As Mr. Payne said, I really encourage you- As Mr. Payne said, I really encourage you to look at, you know, multi-family, again, for central housing. Also, look at the mixed-use avenues, because this is a way that a business can add on residential usage to their business and help with that need. And all of you that operate businesses in Nag's Head know what a tremendous need that is. And again, our educational system, we've got great leadership now. We're one of the top schools in the state, but we can't attract teachers if we can't house them. The other thing, as far as the C-5 zoning, the setback from Highway 12, I'd like to reiterate what John said regarding that, that we need to look carefully at that. If these properties are going to get downzoned essentially to C-5, we need to be fair to them and fair to the people that own raw land or future development tracks, that they won't be penalized in this zoning. A lot of things have happened in the last three or four months regarding zoning and changes. I think, as a former mayor said last two weeks ago, that these zoning ordinances were, some of them put in place in 1969, and I'd say they've served Nag's Head very well. I think all over here that either live or work in the town are proud of Nag's Head. I would ask you to slow down with this process. We're making changes that have been in place, you know, 60 years or so. You know, the staff, the board has put in a tremendous amount of time, and I do commend them for that, too. That's a lot of work that's gone into doing this. But, you know, take some time and make sure you get it right, and we're going to make these major changes. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing done, we'll close the public comment period. Thank you. That brings us to our consent agenda, which you have before you, only two items, since this is a recessed meeting, and a motion would be in order.
Motion to approve this.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. That brings us to the item of the day, item E, and I assume that... Kelly?
Yep. Thank you. Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners, and I want to begin just by thanking everyone who did speak. This board and staff has put a lot of effort into it, so I appreciate everyone acknowledging that, and hopefully, we can move forward with something that we can all agree on. I know last time, this was a pretty lengthy, I don't think this is even working for me at all this time. Will you please pull up the UDO text amend ordinance? Well, I apologize. We could run through there, and maybe Karen can just kind of track as I talk through it. As noted, we did talk about this at our March 1st meeting. Planning staff was given direction to work on some updates to the code, and so that's what we're bringing back before you this morning. But instead of just talking about those amendments, I'll just very briefly kind of go through all of it with you for those who may be interested in seeing it. So, if we can just scroll down. So, this is just the beginning of whereas statements. So, the first round of amendments that we made based upon our conversation on March 1st is to Section 5.6, non-conforming use of a structure. You can see the First Amendment is in 5.6.1.1, where we've added the language that an existing structure that's devoted to a use not permitted by the UDO in this district which is located shall be enlarged or structurally altered, shall not be enlarged or altered in a way which increases the degree of nonconformity. So, this is consistent with language that we have in our nonconforming structure language. Then, just below that, we added an additional paragraph that says, "A structure conforming or nonconforming occupied by a nonconforming principal use, destroyed or otherwise modified by any means, may be repaired, maintained, or replaced with an identical or similar structure..." Thank you. "...may be replaced with an identical or similar structure and identical use regardless of value provided the repair, maintenance, or replacement does not create any new structural or use nonconformities, or increase in the existing degree of structural or use nonconformities." So, essentially, if you have a building that contains a nonconforming use, and something happens to that use, whether destroyed by fire, storm, or you just choose to make modifications on your own, that building can go back with the exact same structural nonconformities that it had, can also go back with the exact same use nonconformities that it had. Those things just can't be increased. So, then, moving down to this second paragraph. There must just be a sweet spot that this likes. Moving down to the second paragraph, "Site improvements such as parking, stormwater management, landscaping, may be made upon a property which contains a nonconforming use of structure. However, such improvements must meet the site design standards and dimensional requirements applicable to such improvements as established by the current Unified Development Ordinance." So, you've got your potentially nonconforming structure that has a nonconforming use within it, but you want to make some upgrades to your site. You want to add some parking spaces, you want to rearrange your parking area, you want to add some landscaping, things of that nature. As long as it meets the code, you can still do those things. So, that was our, the First Amendment that we put in there, requested by the board, that's different between the March 1st presentation and this presentation. So, if we scroll down a little bit further, Section 5.6.3, "Nonconforming structure with nonconforming use may be repaired and maintained." We just wanted to make sure that we were eliminating the verbiage that contained, that said you can only do this work up to 50% of the value of the structure over a 12-month period. So, that's been removed. So, you're going to be able to do your repairs and maintenance regardless of value and time. So, that was an important one to have in there as well. All right. So, then, nothing has changed here in Table 6.1. That's just where we're establishing the district. Here, in Section 6.2.4, this is our intent statement. I think Mr. Gray read this aloud and gave a really good description of it. We've not changed anything in this from our March 1st meeting to today's presentation. It is similar to the C-1 District. I will say that the planning board contemplated the C-1 District, and for reasons that we've outlined in numerous staff reports, it led us to pursue considering a new district, which is why we developed the C-5. Primarily, when you look at the uses in the C-1 and in the C-2 versus what's being proposed in the C-5, it's the intensity of the use that is the difference. So, if that, I think that's reflected in this intent statement, but if it's not, I will just say for clarity, the difference between those two districts is the intensity of the development uses that are permitted there. But again, nothing's changed in this section. So, if we can scroll down. Okay. So, here is where a good amount of amendments were made based upon our conversation earlier this month. So, this is Section 6.6, Table of Uses and Activities. We have added a couple of uses to what we're proposing to be permitted in the C-5 from your last meeting. So, in there, we are now allowing convenience stores. We talked about that. Dormitory use, we do have a dormitory in this district. We didn't talk about it very much, but it's a dormitory use in the front of the building, and then it's got some apartments in the rear. So, that's the structure right beside St. Andrews Church. We also included fueling stations as a use that's permitted now within the C-5. Group development, indoor public assembly, mixed-use development, and shopping center. The other thing that we did with this is we made the approval mechanism in the C-5 consistent with what it was in the C-2. So, if your shopping center was permitted by special use in the C-2, then we proposed that it be permitted by special use in the C-5. If there was a use that was permitted by, permitted by right in the C-2, we just, again, made that consistent in the C-5. So, the big change there is when you saw this on March 1st, everything in the C-5 was special use. So, now, it's no longer all special use, there's a variety there, and everything that's been proposed is going to be consistent with how it's been proposed in the C-2. In doing this, I did provide definitions for all of those uses in your packet. There's some fine details between group development and shopping center, but when we did this, we also noticed that we don't actually have definitions for convenience store and fueling station, and we thought that might be helpful. So, we've added those into Appendix A. A convenience store is going to mean any retail store that provides the public with a convenient location to purchase a variety of primarily packaged consumable goods, generally food, beverages, and other household supplies. A convenience store is often found in conjunction with a fueling station. So, then, we needed a definition for fueling station. So, that's going to mean a retail place of business operated for the purpose of storing and dispensing motor vehicle fuel to the general public. Talking about convenience store and how is that different from a grocery store, we wanted to make that delineation. Turns out, we didn't have a definition for grocery store, so we've included one here for your consideration. It's going to be a retail store that specializes in selling food, both fresh and prepackaged. A grocery store will sell items such as fresh produce, meats, dairy, oftentimes bakery goods alongside canned, frozen, and prepared foods. In addition, a grocery store will sell a full range of household healthcare and personal care items. So, you can see the differences there between convenience store versus grocery store. I think that covers it for the amendments that were related to Section 6.6, permitted uses and activities, the new uses that were proposed, as well as the consistency with their permitting mechanism. So, next, let's see if we scroll back up, I think. All right. So, yep, so, the next item up there is going to be Section 8.2, so if you can scroll down So, at our previous meeting on March 1st, I know everybody here is concerned about lot coverage. So, at our March 1st meeting, this was actually different. We had the proposal to be at 40% impervious, and you can go to 45 with the use of pervious materials. We did hear that we would like to have a consistency with the 55 that's currently permitted in the C-2. So, what we did there is we amended that, we upped both of these to maximum lot coverage is going to be 45% with the use of impervious surfaces. And then, you'll have, you've got that footnote right there that's going to send you to a different section of the code, and Andy's going to pull that up. So, that's going to be Section 8.6, 6.4.1, where we say that lot coverage shall not exceed 45% of the lot area. Lot coverage may be increased to 55% of the lot area, of the lot area with the use of permeable paving materials. So, I think Attorney Gray kind of touched on this earlier, but lot coverage is kind of tricky, especially when you're dealing with percentages and pervious coverages. You'll bear with me, and I hope I don't make things more confusing. I did put a little sheet together to kind of help explain how the pervious materials are going to work. So, when we say pervious materials, a lot of people think about turf stone, but there's also pervious concrete, and there's several different types of brick pavers that could be used as well. These are currently being used in both residential and commercial applications. So, forgive me, I did this late at night, and the graphics aren't great, but hopefully it helps. So, let's say we're dealing with a 20,000-square-foot lot, which is the size of a lot you're going to want within your, within your C-2 or C-5, and you're allowed 55% lot coverage. So, that's going to be 11,000 square feet of coverage that's going to be allowed. And you could convert any portion of that to a pervious material and gain area. So, likewise, with what's being proposed, we'll also take that 20,000-square-foot lot, and we're going to say 45% of that can be in a impervious surface. So, this is your green lot, and so 40%, 45% rather, is going to be this gray area. So, that's going to be your 9,000 square feet of impervious, your concrete parking, your building, your impervious surfaces. So, then, that 10% that we're talking about, that you can have in a pervious material, your 10% of 20,000 is going to give you 2,000 square feet. So, you're going to take that 2,000, and I really like, when I think about pervious, I genuinely do envision the turf stone paver in my mind, because you've got the impervious exterior, but then you've got that pocket in the middle that's going to allow for some drainage. And so, that impervious area is calculated at .67%. The open area is going to be .33%. So, you take your 2,000 square feet times your .67, and that's going to give you 1,340 square feet of coverage. So, then, we get to factor in, okay, we've got these voids over here in our turf stone. So, what we're going to do is we're going to take our 2,000 that we started with, we're going to back out our 1340, and that's going to give us an additional 660 square feet of coverage. So, on this 20,000-square-foot lot, you're going to have 9,000 square feet of concrete or impervious. Then, you're going to have your 2,000 square feet of... Then you're going to have your 2,000 square feet of pervious surface, which is actually going to be this, it's going to equate in a lot coverage calculation to 1340. And then you're going to have your 660. So you're going to end up with 11,660 square feet of lot coverage, which is actually greater than your 55. It's going to be 58.3. So...
What's the maximum under C2 in comparison?
John, we'll get to questions in a minute.
Sure. I can go ahead and answer that. So the area that is being covered, your lot coverage, your impervious coverage is limited to 55%. But the area that you can cover is larger. The actual area that you can cover will be 58.3. I know it's confusing. And if there's somebody that can explain this a little better, they're welcome to. But hopefully, hopefully this image has, has helped a little bit. You know, we're, we're requiring that 10% be in a pervious material. Someone could opt to use 12%. Someone could opt to use 15% and get an even larger area. Also, the same goes for the C2, where the maximum lot coverage is 55%. Someone could opt to use a pervious paver for any percentage of that that they wish to. And you're still going to end up with your 55% impervious coverage at the end of the project. But the actual physical area that you're covering is going to be larger because you've got that void for your, your pervious materials included. So I just wanted to expand on that a little bit. We can get rid of that slide for now. So then moving down, Section 7.20, I think, was our next one? Yeah, so we, we made no changes to Pet Shop, which was just above that. There were no amendments requested there. So the next item is going to be Section 7.20, Supplemental Regulations for Fueling Stations. So if you remember, at our March 1st meeting, fueling stations were not allowed in the C5. And what we heard was that perhaps we can bring those back into the C5. So we've proposed that along with some conditions. So when you see fueling station in Table 6.6, it's going to have an S and an R, which means it's going to be a special use permit and it's going to have some supplemental regulations. And what you see up there are the supplemental regulations. We had to do some renumbering here. The existing 7.20.1 and 7.20.2, those exist in another section of the code. So there was no need to duplicate that. So when we're renumbering this, the new language is going to be under Section 7.20.4, which reads, "In addition to the conditions above, when a fueling station is proposed within the C5 historic character commercial zoning district, the following condition should apply. Fueling station shall have no more than four fuel dispensers. No fueling station with or without a convenience store shall be constructed on a lot having frontage on NC-12. And a convenience store use associated with a fueling station shall not exceed 3,500 square feet of habitable building area." So 3,500 is consistent with the size of a single-family dwelling. If you have a lot less than 16,000 square feet. And then also, in looking at the fueling stations that we have, the 3,500 captured the fueling stations that are currently existing within the town. And I have more information on that if, if the board would like to see it. So if we can scroll down from there. So our next amendment is going to be Section 7.3.2. And this is, just to clarify, the types of uses that are considered as commercial mixed-use development. And to clarify that if a use is listed in Section 7.3.2, but it's not permitted in the zoning district, which it is, which the commercial mixed use is being proposed, then it's subsequently not permitted within a commercial mixed-use development. So Section 7.3.2, it's got a long list of uses that are going to be permitted as part of a commercial mixed use. Not, all of those uses are permitted in the district. So we just wanted to make sure that that was clear. It, it wasn't previously, so as part of this amendment, we wanted to include that in there. So our next group of amendments, Section 8.3, Special Development Standards, Primary Zoning Districts. There were some changes here. Most notably, we revised the language to increase the proposed building habitable, habitable building area for commercial structures that front NC-12 from 3,500 square feet to 4,200 square feet. This is being proposed to ensure that existing commercial structures that may have an attached accessory residential use would not be made nonconforming by the proposal. The proposed 4,200 and square feet of habitable building area is also consistent with the maximum allowable building area that we have for residential structures in our Soundside Residential Overlay District, which is also considered an historic district within the town. So there's some consistency in that number with the 4,200. We did want to clarify that the Board of Commissioners would only be required to make the finding that a building design is reflective of Old Nax Head for those uses that are a special use. So originally, everything was going to be a special use. So the Board would have to make that finding. Now that we've made consistency there with C2, not every use will be a special use. But this was just to clarify that if it is a special use, we left in that language that the Board would have to make a finding that building design was reflective of the heritage of Old Nax Head and did not diminish the unique architectural character of historic Beach Cottage Row. So then, just below that, you'll see some strike-through language. This is also language that pertained to the requirement for special use permit. So we could just go ahead and eliminate that language. So if we scroll down from there, we've already talked about this, so we can keep going. No changes were made to Section 10.24. No sections, no changes were made to this area as it pertains to lot coverage for religious complexes in the proposed C5. No changes to Section 7.23. And then when we get down to Appendix B, that's where we have those definitions, which I have already read aloud. So I won't do that again. So that's the extent of the amendments that we made based upon the Board's discussion at their March 1st meeting. It's a lot, again, I know, it can be very confusing. So I'm happy to address any questions that anybody has.
I'll start. I'm going to try without comment first to just ask some clarifying questions, if I may, and then, and then turn it over to the Board. This was a question I had asked. So we, we, you presented language for nonconforming structures with nonconforming uses. But we have made many of the uses now conforming. We've, we've changed the table of uses. So many of the uses that were going to be nonconforming uses are now conforming uses.
Correct.
So they would be subject to language we already had in the ordinance, which, and I'll read a couple of sections, 5.3.2, "A nonconforming structure occupied by a conforming use," which most of these properties we're talking about would now fall into that category. "Nonconforming structure with a conforming principal use destroyed or otherwise modified by any means may be repaired, maintained, or replaced with an identical or similar structure regardless of value, provided the repair maintenance or replacement does not create any new structural nonconformities or increase the degree of structural nonconformities." And 5.3.3, "Should such structure be moved for any reason, for any distance whatsoever, then it has to conform to all the regulations that we have in the, in the ordinance." So we take one of the, one of the, and John, I'll use your property as an example because it's pretty grossly nonconforming. Setbacks, building length-width ratio, it's that lot coverage, it's, you know, it's up in the 70-some percent, you know, mid-70s percent lot coverage as it stands today, et cetera, et cetera. He's now a conforming use, though. So if that building burned down to the pilings, he could put it back, same size it is today. I'm sorry?
God forbid.
God forbid. Same size it is today, in the same place it is on the site. You can't move it on the site. He can only put it back exactly where it was, exactly like it is. Would we make him comply with any of the lot coverage requirements? Or impose new stormwater requirements? Or setbacks for parking? Or any of the other provisions of the ordinance?
So the, the answer to that is no, we would not. But if there was an area where we were capable of making a nonconformity a little less nonconforming, we would want that. But otherwise, no.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that. The second is a lot coverage discussion. So let me, let me ask, let me, let me pose that question a different way. I have a 10,000 square foot lot. The only thing I want to put on it is a 100% pervious parking lot. And I'm going to ignore the question of whether that's permitted in the district or not, just to explore how the numbers work in the two districts. I have a 10,000 square foot park, I have a 10,000 square foot lot. I can put an 8,200 square foot parking lot on that site that's 100% pervious because 8,200 times .67 is 5,500 square feet. That would be calculated at 55% lot coverage on a 10,000 square foot lot, even though I had covered 8,200 square feet of the lot.
82%.
There's no absolute maximum, I'll point out. A neighboring town actually does exactly the same thing, but they have an absolute maximum of 75%. We don't have an absolute maximum. Can I do that same exercise in C5? Because I've used pervious pavement as it's required. The 55% threshold is exactly the same in the C5. So if I take a 10,000 square foot lot, I use 100% porous pavement, I cover 8,200 square feet, I calculate the lot coverage and it comes to 55%, I can do that in the C5 as well?
The way it's written, yes.
Okay, just making sure. So the threshold for, the threshold for pervious is different. But the net result, depending on how you design the site, and I'm using a gross simplification, I realize, to just illustrate how the numbers work. But you're actually balancing buildings and parking. But it's the same in both, in both. Okay. Can you talk a little bit more about the building size? Because we had a, we have a 5,000 square foot limit in the ordinance, fronting 12. Is it 10, it's 10,000?
It is.
It's 10,000 fronting 12. Okay. Okay, then that's not a question. I, I do, I understand where the 4,200 came because I asked that question. And staff looked at existing sites. I mean, the 4,200 was essentially to capture existing facilities and not make them nonconforming structurally. Okay. I think that's it for questions for me at this point. So I'll start. Commissioner Cahoon.
Thank you. Kelly, you've done a great job in a short amount of time. And you captured pretty much everything that I think the Board asked for in this with the changes. Could you explain a little bit? You referenced Soundside Overlay District. Could you reference, explain a little bit that, how it's encapsulated in this proposal?
Um, I don't know if, is there the ability to pull up GIS? Or, I mean... So the Soundside Residential Overlay District, it's a, it's a very small district that's over, we might, may be able to pull up GIS and I can show it to you. But it's at the end of Soundside Road. And it was one of the first areas of Nax Head that was inhabited. A lot of the homes that were originally in this Soundside Residential Overlay District were actually moved to the oceanfront and are part of the homes that are in Historic Cottage Row. So being that this was a historic area within the town, there were more stringent regulations that were applied to this area, including lot coverage, setbacks, habitable building area, and building stories that you could apply there. So here it is. So if you see here, you, your Soundside Road, west side, you come down, you make this turn here. The Stinson Cottage used to sit right here. And so this is our Soundside Residential Overlay District. This is where we have those more stringent regulations. In this area, given this area's history, there's a maximum habitable building area for structures here, 4,200 square feet. So when we were looking at the existing structures in the proposed C5, noted that there was a commercial structure that met that 3,500, but had some accessory residential associated with it. We wanted to make sure that that was unaffected. Looking at the historic area, taking into account our regulations for Soundside Residential Overlay, being the 4,200, it, it, it just made sense to us to apply that same dimensional standard within the proposed C5. So, and Andy's got the Soundside Residential Overlay pulled up. So you can see there's, there's some design standards, there's habitable building area standards, different setback requirements, things of that nature. And so it's, it's just creating a, a consistency with that.
The other question is the 75-foot setback from Highway 12.
Yes.
Could you explain that a little bit more?
Sure.
As to the development of it?
So if, the way the ordinance is written, if your lot fronts NC-12, you're going to be limited to that 4,200 square foot building area. If your lot fronts US 158, you're going to be able to have a building area of 10,000 square feet. If you have dual frontage, so your lot has frontage on both 158 and NC-12, then we have to think about how we split up that 4,200 versus 10,000. In a different section of our code that's related to commercial building design, it speaks to structures being set 75 feet off of US Highway 158 if they're going to be larger than 10,000 square feet. So again, trying to maintain some consistency. We kept that 75 feet and said, okay, if you're on NC-12 and you have dual frontage, but you're 75 feet away from the NC-12 right-of-way, you're going to be able to take advantage of that greater habitable building area of 10,000 square feet. So there are parcels that front NC-12 that are of a size and area where they can meet the 75-foot setback, but they do not have dual frontage. They don't have frontage on 158. They don't have frontage on 158 as well. I don't know if that explains it. It could even be beneficial to pull up GIS maybe and look at some parcels. It's whatever the board's interested in.
Your explanation. Well, clarify, you said that the C2, you had to have a 75-foot setback from 158?
For a building 10,000 square feet or greater.
So are they going to have both 75 feet on each road?
In the C5, I mean, in the C2?
In the proposed C5.
Okay, so we're saying in the C5, if you have frontage on both, if you're 10,000 square feet, I've got to think this through in my head. Maybe not necessarily because you can be anywhere between 4,200 and 10,000 square feet. So to be over your 4,200, you're going to have to meet, I'm going to have to draw this out in my mind.
If your lot only fronts on 12, you're limited to 4,200 square feet.
Correct, but if you have dual frontage and...
You have to be at least 75 feet from 12 right of way to exceed the 4,200.
Correct, but if you're 5,000 square feet, if you're over your 42, but you're not at your 10,000, you do not have to meet that 75 foot from 158 as well. So there's the flexibility between 4,200 and 10,000. So at 10,000 or greater, yes, you're having to meet 75 from both frontages.
Okay, that was my question.
It's not as appropriate for the scale. We were looking at anything that gets built closer to 12 needs to be more appropriate scale.
Right, right.
And so then once you start going away from 12, you can enlarge the building if it's more closer to the biomass. And a high...
Right, and if you're, if you're 10,000 or greater, you're going to have to be 75 from 158 as well.
Because the maximum building size, if I may, Commissioner, the maximum building size fronting 158 in C2 today is 20,000 square feet.
Yes.
Right, so if you're greater than 42, if you're between the highways and you're greater than 4,200 but less than 9,999 square feet, you only have the 175 foot to deal with. Once you pass the 10,000 square feet, you have both 75s to deal with, okay.
I'm sorry, I made that confusing.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Could you say something about the size limit is per building? There's nothing that says you can't have more than one building?
Correct, the, yes. So Town Manager Garmin noted the size limit is per building. So the 4,200 square foot is per building. We do not limit the number of buildings to one building. You could have, if your lot will accommodate it, you can have multiple 4,200 square foot buildings.
Or if your lot would accommodate, you could have multiple 10,000 square foot buildings.
Exactly, yes.
If you're 75 feet.
I'm done, thank you.
Commissioner Brinkley.
No questions, I will have some comments for later on, but I do want to thank Kelly and the staff, a great deal of work in a short period of time, even though it's been six months, with everything working the way it has, it's been good. But thank you so much, and the way you explain it makes it easier to understand. So thank you.
Mr. Sanders.
Yeah, I want to go back to the mayor's original question because I see a lot of business owners in here and I appreciate all your input and all the conversations that we've had. And so in the C5, we put in all these regulations to help with the nonconformities and being able to rebuild. No matter how much of your building has been destroyed, you know, you can rebuild the whole thing on the same footprint. For a nonconforming business in C2, that's different, isn't it? I mean...
So the language that we have proposed, the language that we've proposed for the nonconformity as far as the nonconforming use, it's actually townwide. We're not just limiting it to the C5. Nonconforming uses, a lot of that language is, is when you're thinking of some egregious use that you really want to try to phase out. We don't have any of those, so there's no need to only amend this for the C5. It would actually apply townwide.
Okay, very interesting, all right, thank you.
Sure.
Anything else?
No.
All right, not hearing any other questions. I think we can, I think we can excuse you for the time being. Anyway, not to say that we may not want you back as we start to sort of debate this. Does the board have any questions of anyone else besides Kelly you might want to ask relative to this?
No comment. That this is only text amendments, this is not the map amendments. The maps will be done in April, or proposed maps.
Correct.
Because we've asked for some things to be brought back to us in April. So this is not anything to do with the map amendments.
Yes. My only statement is the questions that y'all had, have they been answered? John, you had something earlier and I think it's been answered, but I want to make sure that you have a clear understanding and you have your answer.
If I, I would like to here to state that, you know, again, well, Ben tried to draw this out on the, on lot coverage, it's still fuzzy math to me. I didn't follow it clearly enough. I want to make sure that lot coverage is equitable between C5 and C2. That it's the same possible like lot, lot coverage.
Thank you.
Because my understanding of C2 is you can get up to 65% of pervious covering and everything else.
Right, thank you, John.
Now, can I, for other comments?
Other comments or motion? I think we could probably go with comments first for a bit if we want to do that because that may lead to other questions before we put a motion up, so yeah.
The concerns we heard from were lot coverage. Answered that, 55% is not an absolute, 4,200 square feet. That wasn't a number that was just grabbed out of the air that was to make buildings in that, in the proposed C5 compliant or not conforming, and that actually the Soundside Overlay District, we pulled from another section, another historic area and plugged in that number. So I appreciate what they've done. I think the staff has addressed the questions and issues, concerns that we had previously that we got from the audience.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Sanders, other comments?
I mean, I feel like we had a really good meeting in March in that, you know, we heard from both sides, a lot of businesses and a lot of residents, and, and, and we've made some really good adjustments to help move this forward. I know a lot of this is, is why are we doing this? And, you know, I think that's come from the focused land use plan of 2017. And I think, you know, it's to protect the future of Nag's Head. And I hope we have addressed all the concerns of the businesses and I hope we are moving forward in the right direction, you know. Interested in other comments as well.
Right, thank you. Commissioner Cahoon.
No, thank you, and I appreciate all the input. We heard a lot of stuff in March, I appreciate the concerns again. John, it's nice to see your mobility is improving with each meeting, appreciate that. The one clarification for me was that it's per structure, size limits, whether it's 4,200 or 10,000 are per structure, not totality on a lot. I mean, a lot of people have more than one building on a lot. I look at you Cindy and I see you have multiple structures. So I'm glad to know that the totality is per building, not per, not per lot. So that was, to me, that was important in dealing with some of the businesses that were actually nonconforming in some cases are now allowed to be rebuilt and all that kind of stuff. So that was important not to diminish anybody's use of a building or as a piece of property.
Thank you. And I can, I'll speak to that a little bit because I was on both of those committees. The one, the committee that developed the land use plan and the committee that developed the UDO. And I think I was the only person to serve on both of those committees. And, you know, the, the land use plan was setting forth a vision for the town. And we, in certain areas of the town, we talked about, we talked about Whalebone, we talked about this area, we talked about a number of areas of the town and what their ultimate character we would like to see. And you reminded me by the discussion about multiple buildings, it was not an interest necessarily in putting an absolute limit to what people could build on their property, but it was to reduce the size of the buildings to an appropriate scale, especially if they were proximate to the, to the beach road. We did not, the, the sense was in that large committee that we did not want large buildings sort of looming over the beach road. So that's where that originated from and, and the whole discussion about, about setbacks. I appreciated this morning the clarity about how the 75-foot setbacks are applied. I have some heartburn with the lot coverage, not enough to make me not vote for this, but we talked about intensity of use. And the discussion about what we're doing in this area has been about limiting the intensity of use. But a developer, given any piece of property, is going to do the maximum with that and that includes going to the maximum lot coverage. And we've learned that in both this, in C2 and C5, you can go to the same ultimate limit, depending on how much money you're willing to spend and how you're willing to balance the building and the parking. You can go to the same limit, so we haven't done anything about intensity of use. All we've done is make it a little more expensive because we have a lower threshold before you have to start using pervious pavement. So again, the use, switching to the pervious pavement, in my mind, because it is more expensive, it is more difficult, it is a ma, it is a maintenance issue, should really be, that bonus in lot coverage really should be an incentive to reduce the runoff and to help with stormwater control. And I think this waters that down, waters down that incentive because, because, you know, we're not tying it to stormwater management, we're tying it to intensity and then we're really not doing anything about intensity. So that's my, that's my only beef with all of this. And, but again, that's not enough of a beef for me, given that you can get to the same result for me to necessarily vote against this.
May I give a point of clarification as to how we came about with not wanting large buildings on the beach road?
Sure.
Visually, just think of the shopping center over here. The original food line proposal was to be between the highways, that big building. That was the orig, that was the original proposal and the town didn't go along with it. So because we valued what was on the beach road and the visual aspects of coming into the town and so forth. So that just gives you a little bit of an idea of what values the town has and it was reflected in the land use plan and the UDO.
Great, so, yes, thank you. Sorry, John, we had a public comment period, so no. All right, board, anybody prepared to make a motion?
Make a motion to a community representative?
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I think, I think we'd, I think we'd already covered it. So all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, thank you. We do appreciate all of the input we received. I think we really got to a pretty good compromise position. I appreciate all the work that staff put into this. Appreciate all the attention neighbors gave to this. So I think probably we're at a point where we should take a brief recess. So let's take about a 10-minute recess.